Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 12, 2021 Oshkosh Common Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Lougerour.
Here.
Hansen.
Here.
Miller.
Palmieri.
Here.
Present six.
And Councilmember Wojciechowski will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of our life in our city and our residents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we also have two proclamations this evening: White cane Awareness Day and Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month. And we have with us some students and advisors from Seoul at UW Oshkosh Student Organization for Latinos. And we also have Pastor Jose Robles from the...
Light of the World Church.
Light of the World Church here as well. First, I'll read this in English, and a pastor will read it in Spanish. Whereas Wisconsin's Hispanic and Latinx population has grown from 2010 to 2020, according to the Census Bureau, figures show that Hispanic and Latinx residents in Wisconsin now make up 7.1% of the state's population. And whereas Oshkosh is proud to be called home to a 3.9% Hispanic population, and as of the last census, 1,770 Hispanic and Latinx people live in Oshkosh. Whereas with over 60 million Hispanic Americans residing in the United States, Hispanic Americans make up the largest minority group in the nation and have significantly contributed to our government, culture, and economy over generations. And whereas the Hispanic community in America, Wisconsin, and Oshkosh has made many important advances in areas of law, religion, agriculture, art, music, education, technology, architecture, cuisine, theater, and exploration. And whereas Hispanic Americans have provided Oshkosh, Wisconsin, and the United States with unique social and cultural influences, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our city, state, and nation. And whereas Wisconsin is fortunate to count among its population a large number of residents of Spanish and Latin American descent who grow businesses, offer innovative ideas, strengthen our economy, create jobs, and contribute to our daily lives. And whereas during this month, Wisconsin's Hispanic American community celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrating the rich tradition and many contributions this community has made to the state of Wisconsin and city of Oshkosh. And whereas we appreciate and honor the countless achievements of Hispanic Americans and continue our efforts to ensure our city and state is a welcoming and inclusive place that provides just and equal opportunities for all, now therefore I, Lori Palmieri, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month in Oshkosh. Pastor?
Mother Mayor, I thank you on behalf of the Hispanic community in Oshkosh and the Light of the World Church. I want to express that it is an honor and privilege to be able to read today's proclamation. Distinguida alcaldesa, le agradezco en nombre de la comunidad hispana en Oshkosh y de la iglesia La Luz del Mundo, quiero expresar que es un honor y un privilegio el poder dar lectura a la proclamación de este día, que dice de la siguiente manera. Octubre como mes de la herencia hispana y latina, considerando que la población hispana y latina de Wisconsin ha crecido del 2010 al 2020. Según la oficina del censo, las cifras muestran que los residentes hispanos y latinos en Wisconsin ahora constituyen el 71% de la población del estado. Y considerando que Oshkosh se enorgullece de ser el hogar de una población hispana del 3.9%. Y que según el último censo, 1,770 personas hispanas y latinas viven en Oshkosh. Considerando que con más de 60 millones de hispanoamericanos que residen en los Estados Unidos, los hispanoamericanos constituyen el grupo minoritario más grande de la nación y han contribuido significativamente a nuestro gobierno, cultura, economía, y durante generaciones. Y considerando que la comunidad hispana en los Estados Unidos, Wisconsin y Oshkosh ha hecho muchos avances importantes en las áreas del derecho, la religión, la agricultura, el arte, la música, la educación, la tecnología, la arquitectura, la cocina, el teatro, y la exploración. Y considerando que los hispanoamericanos han aportado a Oshkosh, Wisconsin, y los Estados Unidos influencias sociales y culturales únicas, enriqueciendo fundamentalmente el extraordinario carácter de nuestra ciudad, estado, y nación. Y considerando que Wisconsin tiene la suerte de contar entre su población con un gran número de residentes de ascendencia española y latinoamericana, que hacen crecer los negocios, ofrecen ideas innovadoras, fortalecen nuestra economía, crean puestos de trabajo, y contribuyen a nuestra vida cotidiana. Y considerando que durante este mes, la comunidad hispanoamericana de Wisconsin celebra el Mes de la Herencia Hispana, celebrando la rica tradición y muchas contribuciones de esta comunidad ha hecho al estado de Wisconsin y a la ciudad de Oshkosh. Y considerando que apreciamos y honramos los innumerables logros de los hispanoamericanos y continuamos nuestros esfuerzos para seguir de nuestra ciudad y estado sea un lugar acogedor e inclusivo, e inclusivo de proporcionar oportunidades justas e iguales para todos. Por lo tanto, Lori Palmieri como alcaldesa de la ciudad de Oshkosh proclama octubre del 2021 como el mes de la herencia hispana en Oshkosh, fechado este décimo segundo día de octubre del 2021. Gracias.
Gracias. Would you like to say a few things?
Yeah, yes. Well, thank you very much on behalf of the students organizations of Latinos here at UW Oshkosh. We are a group of professionals and future professionals who are working very hard for this where we call now our home. I've been living here for the past 15 years. My husband is actually, like I say, bred and born in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, and this is my home and the home of my children. So I'm very proud to consider myself a new Wisconsinite. And I think I share the sentiment of my students as well, who also consider this their home. And all what we want is to contribute to make it, you know, a better place.
Thank you very much. And you have your copy, and you have your copy. Thank you very much. All right. We have one more proclamation this evening, and that is White cane Awareness Day. Whereas the white cane, which every blind citizen of our state and city has the right to carry, demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life and the capacity to work productively in competitive employment. And whereas the white cane, by allowing every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place, makes it possible for the blind to fully appreciate and contribute to our society and to live the lives they want. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires that motorists and cyclists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And whereas Wisconsin law also calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware of and utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And whereas the state of Wisconsin through its public agencies and with the cooperative assistance of Oshkosh can and should facilitate the expansion of employment opportunities for and greater acceptance of blind persons in the competitive labor market. Now therefore I, Lori Palmieri, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim October 15th as White cane Awareness Day in the city of Oshkosh. Do call upon our schools, colleges, and universities to offer full opportunities for training to blind persons upon employers and the public to utilize the available skills of competent blind persons and to open new opportunities for the blind in our rapidly changing society. And upon all citizens to recognize the white cane as a tool for independence for blind pedestrians on our streets and highways. And a hard copy of this has been mailed to their Madison office. Thank you. We have two presentations this evening, the first of which is the Downtown Oshkosh Business Improvement District. If you'd step up there and introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica Midle from the Downtown Oshkosh Bid. I am here today to tell you a little bit about some of the things that we've been working on in the past year, and I'm super excited to be here. Hopefully, you can all hear me okay through my mask, but I'll do my best. So if you're wondering what BID stands for, it stands for the Business Improvement District. So you can see on the map up there that the district is about from the 100 block of North Main Street through the 500 block, and then extends from North Main Street to Oregon. It kind of makes like a triangle around that area. The properties within the BID receive a special assessment each year that make up our annual budget. There are 115 assessable properties within the Business Improvement District and a 12-person board that represents those property owners. The 2021 assessment amount was $140,610, and we added about $40,000 in reserves to that budget for an operating budget of about $180,000. Within our operating plan, we have a couple different line items. Sorry about that. I manage the BID full-time, so I represent the downtown throughout the community, and then I also carry out the tasks that are designated by the board and its members. Some of the line items within our operating plan are beautification, recruitment and retention, events, advertising, et cetera, and I'll tell you about all of those things here shortly. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the key partners that we work with actively to achieve our goals downtown. One of those key partners is the Oshkosh Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is where my position is housed, and it actually, they actually employ the BID manager. We also collaborate on a ton of things, a lot of things that they do align really well with what we do. Obviously, their goal is to make Oshkosh a destination, and our goal is to make downtown Oshkosh a destination, so we have a lot of common goals. So they've been a really key partner for us. Another key partner is the city of Oshkosh, of course. We work on so many different things, from creating pilot programs, which you'll hear about probably nonstop in this presentation. They help us install some of our holiday decor downtown and help with the assessment and some of the admin stuff itself. We also work with the Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation for a variety of recruitment and retention efforts. And the Chamber has been a longtime partner of the BID as well. So lastly, the Community Foundation is another key partner that we work with to fund, help fund some of the projects that we work on, which I'll tell you a little bit about as well. So one of those key line items within our budget is beautification, so that's where a majority of our budget is spent. So each year, annually, we pay for flowers throughout downtown. We contract with the company to plant over 100 flower pots, 20-plus bump outs, and then we remove all of those flowers and put the, like, holiday bows and things for the holiday season in them as well. We not only plant the flowers and do the holiday installations, but we also maintain the flowers, doing watering, garbage pickup, and maintenance of the overall green spaces throughout downtown as well. We also have five seasonal banner changes throughout the year. I'm working on designing all new ones for next year, which is super exciting. Like I said, I think I said this already, they change five times, and we contract with someone to put those up for us. And then we also, last year with the parade and a lot of our awesome events that we put on for the holidays being canceled, we fundraised over $20,000 for all-new lights and decor in the square. And we'll continue to fundraise this year as well to kind of add to that and make our square just an awesome place for the community to gather over the holiday season. Next, we focus a lot on recruitment and retention, so retaining businesses downtown and also recruiting businesses to start up downtown or move downtown. This was really key last year in 2020, when all these grant and loan programs and things were coming out. So I work a lot with the business owners, communicating with them on some of those different opportunities. And then I also work closely with GoEDC and the Chamber to work with new businesses and things that are moving to the downtown area. We also offer a variety of different retention and recruitment grants as well. We also take care of all the marketing and events that go on downtown. So we obviously want to make downtown a destination for the community, so we do that by advertising all the awesome things that we have and then hold events to draw people to the downtown area. Some of those events include the Fall and Spring Wine Walks, the Annual Holiday Parade, Jazz in the Square, Chalk Walk, and a variety of other ones. And we also financially support some of our bigger events downtown, like Waterfest and Oshkosh Farmers Market. Something I'm super excited to talk about is some of the special projects that we've been working on. I don't know if you've all made it downtown yet to see the new Emma Daisy mural, but it's totally awesome. It's 128 feet of colorful flowers on a, what was an ugly wall downtown. So it's been a really awesome project, and it's been awesome to see people down there taking pictures in front of it and making memories in our downtown. So that's been a fun project to work on. We're also, I'm currently in the midst of working on the utility box project. I think that this came a couple weeks ago in front of you guys. But that's, we're calling it Powered by History. So there are historical images that have been altered, they're brightly colored, fun and engaging. There'll likely be like a QR code that you can kind of do a walking history and art tour throughout downtown. There's 11 boxes, city-owned boxes in the downtown area, so currently working on making that a reality and getting all of the marketing materials together for that. And then we also, this one isn't as fun, but we help remove signals from the downtown area, which is a multi-year project, and we're in year two of that project. So as you know, that can be quite a nuisance and damaging to downtown properties. So I just, I don't think I could go through this conversation, or through this presentation without bringing up Roger Brooks. I know Amy from the Convention and Visitors Bureau had presented on it a couple months ago, but a lot of the things that he found when he came here was how much we could improve upon beautification in the downtown area and draw more people and have more activity downtown. And I love this quote that he said about downtown being your community living room, because that's totally what it is and what it should be. It's an area that's inclusive and brings people together to eat and play and hang out with one another. So we are kind of taking that and running with it. Obviously, the mural project kind of transpired from that, but you've heard a little bit probably about the plaza. So we are having some general discussions about that concept and what that means for our downtown, and just super excited for what's to come downtown. I kind of touched on most of these things, but I think when we're planning for the future, we can look at doing some more public art. I think that was a great success for our downtown. We have been working on some of those pilot programs and changes in city ordinances that create a more business-friendly environment and promote beautification downtown, such as we're doing a flower pot pilot program to allow businesses to have some flower pots and things out in front of their businesses. And then also just connecting with university students and young professionals in our area to try to both recruit and retain them. We did a little Titan Town banners throughout downtown and made a little extra effort this year to try to encourage students to come downtown, especially and their families during Welcome Week and stuff. So this is my last slide, I promise. Just some photos of just some of the impact that the things that the BID does, has on our community. The top left is a photo of a father and his son during the tree lighting ceremony after we installed all of our new decor downtown. It's obviously just a really special moment after a really challenging year for our community. And then the bottom left is some people dancing during the farmer's market, and I think that picture like almost perfectly illustrates that community living room quote by Roger Brooks. And then lastly, I just love this photo on the right of all the college students, and I know they're college students because the sororities were tagging me on Instagram, the downtown Instagram, but taking pictures in front of the mural. So we're obviously doing an okay job, at least, at bringing some of those students downtown because they enjoy the farmer's market and they love taking photos downtown and doing all of that. So that's kind of all I have, but if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and then my contact information's up there as well if you have any follow-up questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Does anyone have questions?
No, okay. Thank you.
I know how to get on all day.
Okay, and I believe we have someone here from RA Smith regarding the Street Improvement Special Assessment Alternative Transportation Utility Introduction.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. I'm Jeff Mazonic with RA Smith, and I've been working with your staff, your team, for a while to work into a transportation user charge type system and have some presentation tonight, kind of defining how those utilities are formed, how they're developed, and kind of the mechanics that go on behind the scenes. So I'm really glad your prior presentation had a lot of images and photographs, because I don't. So we're going to start out first with, you know, what is a transportation utility and try to come with a common basis on that. And, you know, starting with utility, utility is an entity that serves your community with goods or services, and a lot of what is done by cities are done by utilities or through them. For example, you know, water, sewer, and power. In this case with transportation, it's a, it supports the infrastructure that creates the transportation system to move goods and services through it. So that's the basis for what a utility is. I'm going to talk a little bit more about this one in particular. Utilities in all of the cases above are funded through user charges, and the user charges are created and based on proportionate use or consumption of those goods and services that are provided. And then those funds are used in turn specifically to support that utility's function. So those funds aren't used for other things, they're used specifically for those things. In the case of a transportation utility, the charges are generally based on the number of trips generated by each property or account as a measure of its proportionate system usage. And also understand some of you have been very familiar with this, and some of you are new to it. I tend to speak kind of fast and being respectful of your time, but if you have questions along the way, please, please ask, okay? So there are certain key factors that define a user charge itself, and these come from the Public Service Commission, they're common. A user charge should be based on cost, cost-based, and equitable, and then set to meet the requirements of the utility. It should be easy to understand and administer, and they should be allocated in relationship to use and to benefit. And they should be stable, and your ability to provide your customers with something to expect, the perceptions that they're stable from year to year. In other words, you don't want to have these charges jump up and down all the time frequently. In a memo prepared by the Wisconsin League of Wisconsin Municipalities last year, they went further in looking at transportation utilities, and they suggested that fees should be placed in a specifically separated fund and used only for transportation purposes. So the fees collected for your water utility, for example, aren't used for things other than water. In the same case, fees collected through a transportation utility user charge need to be used specifically and only for transportation infrastructure. They should be collected in the same manner, and indeed, the other communities that are doing this are using their utility billing system as the backbone of how they collect and administer. The formula for calculating fees, we're going to talk more about, should be as accurate as possible. Avoiding tax-exempt properties, in other words, in this case, there are no properties exempted from the charge regardless of their tax status, because it's based on their use in the same way that your water bills go to all properties in the city that consume And then also to reflect reality, in that if there's a way to demonstrate reduced use or reduced cost, that that's reflected in the rates on it. So again, those comments came from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities and what they published last year. The next few slides, I'm going to walk through the process for developing a user charge structure and then how it applies to specific properties and kind of as an example on it. It's the basis for how the whole program is built and how it relates to those primary criteria from earlier. So it recognizes that every property in the community has basically two relationships to infrastructure that moves goods and services. One is that each property enjoys a benefit of being able to be accessed through the streets. You can come to the property, you can leave the property, and it's a benefit to each property, and that benefit is the same for every property in the city regardless of what it is and how it works. And then second, each property generates trips, and each trip uses some of the road's capacity. So every, as cars travel over your roads, it leads to their degradation and ultimately to their replacement on it. And also, again, that it be applied in the same manner to all properties consistently, so everything is considered equitable. So the bottom line into that is that properties that generate more trips tend to pay more of the cost because they're using a greater proportion of share. So how are the charges determined? And this works the same way as your other utilities. You start off with a target budget, and then you need to come up with billable units, and you divide the billable units into the budget to come up with a rate. In this case, those billable units are trips, and the trips are assigned to each property based on the size of the property or the scale and its type of use. And we'll get into that in more detail, but once you have that total budget, and you can divide the total number of trips into it, you have a rate, and you can use that to calculate a user charge for that property, and we'll show you some examples. So again, each property's charge is based on the trips associated with it, and that's based on how that property is used or how it functions and the size or scale of that So going to an individual property, how does that happen? It starts off by identifying a dominant land use or dominant function. It could be a school, it could be a fast food restaurant, it could be a residential home, it could be an office building. Each of those has different trip generating characteristics, and those characteristics have been catalogued and documented over decades through the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and that data is maintained in their trip generation statistics that are published and then updated periodically. So more specifically, right now, we're using the IT Trip Generation Statistics 10th Edition of data. And over time, those numbers change and their uses change as our practices change. For example, when I started using this with the sixth edition 15 years ago, they didn't have a specific set of data for marijuana dispensaries, right? But they do now. So it's a living document that changes every several years and generates, or maintains that data.
Real quickly, how many land uses do we have right now that you can model for?
Well, there are, in the IT Trip Generation Statistics, they cover about 240 different land use types. There isn't one of every in Oshkosh. I think in your current model, there may be 160 or so that are being used on it, so it's fairly specific, which is helpful, of course, because you have a lot of different things going on here. So if you're looking at a property, you're looking at a, let's say, an apartment So, if you're looking at a property, you're looking at a, let's say, an apartment building with 24 units in it, there's a specific use for multifamily buildings that gives you trips per dwelling unit, and if there's 24 dwelling units, then you multiply that scale factor, 24 times the rate, and that's the trips for that property. One thing, the last bullet notes too, is the simple math is there, but then you need to also be, again, recognizing that, for example, your golf course doesn't generate a lot of activity in the winter, so there are adjustment factors. Again, a model starts off with a textbook approach, but then you apply real factors to it. For example, schools aren't as active in the summer, golf courses, marinas have seasonal adjustment type factors with that. And then backing up a little bit too, a trip is when you start or end, or when you enter or leave a property. So, you've already accomplished two trips today minimum, probably many more, but you left your home or your business one trip, and you arrived here, trip number two. And it doesn't matter who's making the trip. So, when we're looking at trips at your home, for example, you left your home, you'll return to it, that's two, but while you were gone, maybe Amazon made two deliveries, and the mailman, and garbage collector, and others in your family. So, those all add up as trips essentially moving in and out of your property each time. So, I wanted to give you a little bit of, I just pulled up a few examples of where this data comes from on it, and this is pulled from the Trip Generation Statistics, the 10th Edition, and this one is for a single-family home. And you can see at the top that the units that are being used here are dwelling units. So, this data is based on just the fact that it's a dwelling unit, an apartment or a home. In this case, it's a single-family detached housing, as you can see up there on an individual lot. And then the graph shows the data, I'm sorry, and there's an average rate from the data on the graph of about 9.44 trips per average weekday. So, if you think through your own home today and just tally up in your head, you know, the number of times you or other family members either left or entered the property, and then on top of that, those other uses and those other types, and it's an average rate. And that's where that comes from. On the graph on the bottom, you'll see the number of units, and up the top, you see the number of trips, and that's, again, showing in some cases a curve best fit, in other cases, it's showing an average rate with the dash line, but gives you an idea of the data that's available there. This example is different. This is manufacturing facility, and I'm sure you can read the description. The big thing in a manufacturing facility that distinguishes it is, as you can see there, it's where the primary activity is converting raw materials to a finished product of some sort. That distinguishes it from, for example, an industrial activity. And in this case, you can see the data where the scale on the bottom is based on billable units of thousands of square feet gross floor area. And in this case, there's a rate of just under four trips per thousand square feet, which is saying that a 10,000-square-foot manufacturing facility would generate 39.3 trips per average weekday on it.
A question about that. So, going back to the single-family, it's based on the estimated number of times a vehicle is coming to the property. Why would it be different on the manufacturing side based on space instead of anticipated number of trips of vehicles?
So, that is the method for generating the estimate of number of trips is on the basis of the size of the facility for manufacturing. And we'll look at a couple of other examples, but a dwelling unit doesn't apply to a manufacturing facility, but thousands of square feet doesn't. Similarly, the size of a home doesn't really tie to the number of trips so much as the fact that it's a single-family home. So, some of these uses have multiple types of scale factors. For example, for schools, you can estimate school trips based on its size and square feet, the number of staff and faculty, or the number of students on it, and they have different sets of statistics for those different scale factors on it.
Yeah, I guess I would have expected that it would be based on the number of employees and distributors and vendors coming and going with a manufacturing facility, but I understand different, it's apples and oranges.
Well, this, so, exactly right. So, this, in this case, I guess the orange is the, is 1,000 square feet multiplied by that size, that rate, but you end up with trips, and then the trips becomes a consistent billable basis, billing in its basis for out. So, it's a different, it's a different scale factor to get two trips for the property.
And what it does is, it takes, you know, the number of studies, you know, so rather than having to go to each individual property and count, you know, how many deliveries come in or go, the studies break it down to these various factors. So, in this particular case, it's using 1,000 square feet of gross floor area as the method. You know, as Jeff said, you could use schools for the enrollment, you could use them for the number of employees. There are a number of different ways you can do it, but at the end of the day, it's boiling all of that down to how many trips on average are generated on an average weekday.
Okay, thank you.
Here's another example, and this one is multifamily low-rise. So, the first that we looked at was single-family home. This is just showing you how this recognizes that those properties that are multifamily properties, in this case with four or more dwelling units in the same building, generate fewer trips per property. And when you think about that, typically, when you're living in a single-family home detached, typically that's where you have larger families, perhaps, you have multiple cars. Living in apartments, typically you have either individuals or small families, and typically fewer cars and trips, and it's reflective in the data that shows that instead of 9.44 trips per average weekday for that single-family home, they're showing data of 7.32 trips, or just one visit less essentially. And then switching, since we mentioned schools, I have a school example in there, and this data is based on the number of students enrolled in the school, which I believe is the most consistent across the community. As you know, as you've been through, or many of us have lived through, I guess not many of us, some of us have been around through the years when schools were quite new and very roomy, and then got very, very full of kids again, or very busy, and now enrollments have dropped and it's changed. So, from generating trips, our sense is that the number of students is a much better, fair, objective, and consistent basis for the trip estimate. So, in this case, for a high school, for students on an average weekday, we're looking at just over two trips per student. So, obviously, every time a student comes, they got there, but it's reflecting the fact some come on buses and some come in, you know, car pools and in other ways. And then one last one too is looking at medical office buildings as a specific use. And I wanted to point out here, if I can hit the most, that when you look at the size of the data in the statistics here, the bottom numbers are thousands of square feet. So, if you look at the 50 on the bottom there, that's reflecting a medical office building of 50,000 square feet. That's more than an acre, right? That's very large on it. So, again, the data, the data range and the range of the size of the scales that it offers are all helpful, basic information for it. And this one again is, because it's an office building, this one is based on 1,000 square feet. Medical office buildings tend to be similar in the layout and the kind of support space they need and the different kind of spaces that, you know, support their primary activities. So, again, how are user charges determined? I'm going to start with the available information, target revenue, and that's where you determine how much funding you need to generate from the utility to meet the needs of your program. The number of the billing accounts, you have about 25,000 properties or so in the city. In addition to that, you'll have multiple billing accounts per property in many cases. So, you have that base number. You can assign trips to every property in the community. Again, that's just like adding up all your water meter records and coming up with the total. Then you divide the common costs, those costs that are the basis of administering and running, implementing your user charge system and your utility billing, and divide those by the number of counts to come up with the base cost. And then the remainder of that budget gets divided by the number of trips, the total number, to come up with an annual rate per average weekday trip, and that average rate per annual weekday trip multiplied, times the number of trips, is the basis for the So, when you calculate the two together, the base charge, again, is based on those common costs divided by the number of properties, so that's equal for everyone, and then the usage charge based on trips times a trip rate. There are exempt properties, properties that don't generate any trips, just like properties that don't consume any water, aren't charged, okay?
What would be an example of that?
Undeveloped parcels, they're not done. Many of the communities are looking at or adopting policies where a parcel that has structural improvements on it, but maybe is currently vacant, is not generating trips. Generally, folks are saying they should still pay the base charge because the infrastructure system, the road system, still serves that property and provides that access. It's a developed structure, but it's not paying a usage charge because it's not generating any current trips. As opposed to an undeveloped property without any structural improvements, in which case you don't have a utility account generally anyhow on which to bill it, and it's not generating any trips to speak of, so. Mention parking lots on there is an example. Parking lots aren't the destination, they provide a place for you to go to, but your destination is the adjacent, whatever it is, the adjacent school or business or office space or whatever. So, those are examples. The other two that, in your database, there are a lot of just common areas or park area, kind of not park, but parkway and easements and things like that, so it's just a way to clean that up. Administration, like any other utility, you'd be using your existing utility systems, utility staffing for the billing and the collection to administer it. Like other utilities, there needs to be in your policies, if you were to adopt an appeals process, an ability to review and update. Over time, there'll be changes in ownership, there'll be changes in land use or function, there may be expansions of properties in size. Those factors are the basis for making adjustments on a property's costs over time. And these are the kinds of things your utility staff is already dealing with for your sewer, water, and stormwater utilities. Question on the legal authority. Disclaimer, I'm not an attorney with it, but the basis in Wisconsin for right now, there is not, as it says on the right, there is not currently a state statute that says specifically, here's how you create a transportation utility. The basis for them in Wisconsin.
Real quick, do you know if other municipalities are using this?
Yes.
Any idea how many?
Oh, in Wisconsin or generally?
Yeah, in Wisconsin.
In Wisconsin?
Just curious.
A handful.
Okay.
Most recently, the Village of Peewaki.
Okay.
Actually, the Village of Peewaki sent out their first quarterly billings last week. They went into effect the beginning of the third quarter, and they bill quarterly.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
I believe Appleton is just starting to look at this as an add-on to their wheel packs.
Well, Appleton engaged us as of council approval last week, Wednesday. We'll start with them next week, or the week after next, and they're asking us to do essentially what we've done here for you and for actually eight other communities at this point, and develop this basis, this model, and really with the intent of giving, as with you, a basis for making an informed decision. So, our basis, the data we're providing in the background is really intended to support your consideration of policy options and make that kind of decision. They're looking to begin that process now and catch up to where you are by about March of next year. So, current statute doesn't authorize it specifically, it also does not prohibit it. The Home Rule Authority, you can see the basis or the definition of Home Rule Authority on the left, but that is the basis in Wisconsin for forming these, and there is precedent in that the original stormwater utilities in Wisconsin, and Appleton happened to be the, I believe, the first one to, I think it was the second one formed and the first to actually issue charges in 1992 or '93. And for several years, the original stormwater utilities were formed under the state's Home Rule Authority. At that point, or at some point later in the decade, the Wisconsin Legislature did create statute enabling and specifically defining stormwater utilities on that. So, at this point, we're with transportation utilities, we're back at where the stormwater utilities originally started, and there is obviously other statute that allows municipalities to create and administer utilities as you're doing already. So, next steps, next steps are, and this moves more into James Baileywick, but to refine your target revenue budget, and he can explain where that's from beyond that. Again, our part of this is really developing that utility database, developing the model and the basis for charging, and to move to an implementation, then it's a matter of reviewing and confirming or updating the largest and unique properties in the city, those that generate the most trips, and then reconciling the model to utility accounting so that you can actually implement it and go ahead with it. Of course, you'd need to develop ordinances defining and authorizing, and then also processes and policies to administer, and then, of course, implement and support public education and outreach in a number of, in a number of ways. And then, you know, conceivably, if you're interested in continuing down that path to target March of next year as a utility formation timeframe, and then implementation, you know, later in the year. Unlike the Village of Peewaki, since you do your utility billing on a monthly basis, you have more flexibility in your timing. But I think that's what we prepared as beginning remarks, and I want real quickly, but can always back up if there are any questions.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, thank you, very informative, very helpful. Just correct me if I'm not understanding this correctly. So, basically, this proposal or this idea, this concept, would shift us to a user charge model, but unlike something like, say, like water bills, we don't have the ability to have a meter to just check individual usage. So, we're using these models.
Which is, which is parallel to using impervious area as a proxy for proportionate share of stormwater runoff for it, and even your sewer bills are based on the water consumption, which is different on it, so it's along the same lines of that.
Okay.
And it's using the data that's been developed over decades from the Institute of Transportation Engineers as well.
Very helpful. Do you, if it's too specific, just call me on it, but do the models take into account household size, do we know?
So, it does not, it's an averaging value, and the question, I'm going to just get right to it because it always comes up, is that you do have empty nesters like myself, and some of you appear, maybe you have families at home, and there was a time when I had a couple of teenage kids, and it seemed like all their friends hung out at our place, so the number of trips generated by my property today are different than the number of trips back then, but it's an averaging thing, you don't have the ability to administer it, you know, that discreetly. The other thing though that comes up, and we'll often get the question about somebody's friend or family who maybe doesn't have a car or they're elderly, and as I'm thinking about, I have an elderly father who's still driving, and he goes out downtown, he goes to the post office, he goes to the store, he does two or three things. If he were not able to travel himself, would the other people doing those trips separately forum on it? So, the fact that that person's not generating trips doesn't necessarily mean there aren't any. You have wheels for meals and the visiting nurse and, you know, that kind of thing. So, it's certainly a factor, but there's more to it.
No, I very much appreciate that, and I don't think we should be in the habit of making policy by anecdote, but we're going to hear the anecdotes, and we're going to have to be able to respond so people understand what exactly is happening here.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. Thanks again for the explanation. Could you, for communities that have done this recently, could you give an example of, you know, for a typical single-family household, what the monthly utility fee would be?
So, I've worked on several, and some of them are going ahead, some of them are at the point you're at. Some have set it aside for various reasons. They've studied it, thought it over alongside their other options on that, but in all cases, the annual single-family home cost has ranged between $30 and $150 kind of thing. And again, I mean, each of--
Annually, right?
Annually, exactly, annually, I'm sorry. Yeah, and wide ranges in target revenue needs and purposes. Some communities are looking to replace borrowing for capital improvements, others are looking to replace special assessment funding on it. Those factors all go into the-- Those factors all go into the, the amount that they're recovering, and of course, that translates. What we, we have seen, though, is that it's difficult to compare special assessments, but if, on a property tax basis, residential properties in the community tend to contribute 65 to 73 or 4% of the revenue in a property tax system. They tend to generate between 28 and 35% of the trips in a transportation system. So you, you do see, a, as you did, I believe, with stormwater utilities, you do see a bit of a shift of burden from the residential sector to the, the rest of the community that in fact does generate more trips and gets greater use and benefit from the road system, street system.
So it makes it a more equitable distribution of the costs.
As an engineer, that's my first reaction. As a, as a human living, and equitable is a hard term to define. In my opinion, it's more equitable on the basis that if you generate more trips, it's equitable to pay more of the cost of the infrastructure to support those trips. But, you know, again, that's.
Sure.
Right?
Deputy Mayor Moverhour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a brief follow-up on that, and then I have a question, because I think the council member, the councilwoman asked a very good question, but it's, it sounds, from my own experience through this conversation, it's very specific to each community because we're trying to, to generate X amount of revenue because we're trying to replace X amount of revenue. And Oshkosh has been notoriously reliant on special assessments to improve its, its roads and transportation system, especially compared to its neighbors and its, its sister communities, Appleton, Janesville. We just, we tend to rely on it and have for a while, so our, our needs are, are greater than others. But I just want to make sure that those out there, he did give a range, but that range doesn't necessarily, it, it's not specific to Oshkosh, so careful on that, who's ever going to report on that tomorrow morning, please. But my question really revolves around the ITE, the, the modeling itself. If you wouldn't mind just expanding a little bit on its uses in the marketplace right now. So we're, we're talking about trying to use it as a, as you said, a surrogate or a proxy to determine what each individual parcel's, you know, part of that big pie might be. How is it being used, how is this data being used in the marketplace right now in terms of transportation projects and things like that so that people have a, so there's, we can instill some confidence in why we're using this and how this has been used for the last, as you mentioned, decades worth of data?
I'd, I'll take a first stab and have James.
I was going to say, I'll, I'll jump in a little bit, Jeff. You know, a lot, a lot of times when we talk about development projects, we talk about having to do a TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis. This is the data that's being used to do all of those traffic impact analyses. It's looking at how many trips, what is the road configuration, what are the streets, you know, widths and all that. So this is the data that we have been relying on for years as a part of our development community to make sure that our infrastructure system is able to support a development. You know, if all of a sudden, you know, you've got a, an intersection of two local roads and you want to put a big box store there, the road system's not going to support it and the TIA is going to tell you that. This is the exact same data that's been relied on for years for that purpose, and we're using it to, to narrow it down, you know, and apply it across all of the properties. Jeff, I don't know if you've got something you want to add to that?
I would just add that the, the manual this comes from is literally over 3,000 pages. And I mentioned something in north of 200 different land use types, and I mentioned we're using average weekday trips, but that also includes data on peak week, peak morning hour, peak afternoon hour, different kinds of, of statistics that go into defining the kinds of uses and traffic impact assessments that James is describing to.
So in a nutshell, this is kind of the, the Bible when it comes to, to traffic, its impacts on communities, development, those types of things. This is, this is the go-to in terms of statistics and analysis and, and data-driven decisions.
The, the ITE trip generation manuals, absolutely, this is where everybody turns to to get their data. And they are the ones that have been accumulating all these studies for years.
I would also, I would also add that even though there aren't a lot of communities in Wisconsin that have adopted this, this concept has been in play throughout the country for a good 40 years. There was a much younger Mark Roloff who had this as a project with his very first job in local government in 1983. So this, this is not something that is, that is unused. That was Fort Collins, Colorado. And, and so other communities have adopted it and states have permitted it or use Home Rule, as Jeff mentioned. So it depends on the state, so everybody's rulebook's a little bit different, but the basic concept that we're talking about has been in play for easily 40 years.
I just have a question then. So if IT, the, this information, this data is used for informing those traffic impact analyses, would those individual TIAs still be required if we adopted this model, or would this serve as this kind of blanket data for that purpose? In other words, does that save anybody, any individual TIAs by having this in place?
No, because the TIAs are looking very specifically at the site and the street configurations and, and what is necessary, you know? Let's use as an example, you know, the Merrill School Project. You know, that traffic impact analysis looked at Jackson Street and all the neighboring streets, they did turning counts, and it's, it's more detailed in that it looks at the specific configurations of each of the streets to determine if the network around that development can support the development.
So every development is a little bit different, and that's why with number two under next steps, it's, part of the process is to review and confirm or revise large and unique trip generating properties. The best example I can use, think of a mixed-use property. It's a little bit commercial and it's also a little bit residential. It's some of each, so you don't just take one square footage, you actually apply multiple different factors. So let's say half the building is, is multifamily, then you use the multifamily approach. And there's also a, a category of high-rise apartments. So think of New York City, they take, that's a much different approach than it is in, say, the Sawdust District. So we would take a look at that. And then the commercial does differently. And even within a commercial development, think of an account, accounting firm that their busiest time is, you know, between January 1st and April 15th versus a, a bagel shop, which is every day turning over. So it will vary within the same property depending on the land use. So when a land use changes, rather than change the meters out and do a reread of the meter, we do a reread of what's this use? Is it Mr. Ford's property? Is it Ms. Erickson's property? Different land use require, or creates a different traffic generation factor.
So on the, on the next step specific to that then, the timeframe that would take to get to that review confirmation and revision for those unique properties, is that on our end or is that yet to come from R.A. Smith?
So the next step would involve us accessing your utility accounting, which we've not had access to to date. And the reason is that, as Mark was saying, if you have a commercial property and it's a multi-tenant, I don't want to call it a strip mall, but you know, a multi-tenant one, there may be an H&R Block, there may be a, the, the, Vannudos, I think, is in one, you know, and they're going to have different uses. Each of those is a separate utility account, and each of those has different trip generating statistics and, and rates. So refining it to that level, which is more discreet, is one thing. And that's something we would help you with quite a bit. So that our goal would be, we, we turn over a database that you can use to implement the utility, and then at that point, your staff would need to pick it up and administer it going forward. From that perspective, we, we help you start a program, a little different than delivering a completed project, so to speak, a little different, different form of it. But the other thing going on.
Yeah, I mean, R.A. Smith would have, need to be authorized to do that utility work where they can actually look at our utility accounts by law. They're prohibited from looking at those until we, we contract with them to do that specific, and then they're an agent of the city. Isn't that kind of the term that's used, Lynn, with hiring them to look at utility accounts? You don't know? I thought, I thought you'd already spoken upon that issue.
I, I think, yeah, that, that was related to, I think, you know, Lynn and I had had a conversation about, you know, them being able to access the utility accounts. And there's certain utility information that is protected by state law until you get to a certain level of analysis. Jeff's analysis has been general at this point, so as, as Lynn and I conferred, we did not believe that it met the definitions under the state law of an agent of the municipality to be able to access that information. You know, so that's where Jeff is saying, you know, a next step would be, you know, getting it to that implementation level study, which would require, you know, that level of access.
The other large part of the process is going to be to, to do a lot of public outreach and education. Mr. Casper is already, with the chamber, is already aware and has already invited me to attend. Assuming that we move to the next steps, you know, I'll certainly accept that invitation and engage the chamber because this is, each business is going to vary. If it's a, a very unique type of situation, we need to sit down with those individuals. And it's, it's getting other people to recognize it because even, you know, as we learned the last time, we had a discussion about a transportation utility fee, a lot of questions come up. And I think we want to put the council in a situation where they feel they've gotten all the public input that they need because it's not going to be an easy decision. You're going to have people on both sides of the aisle giving you their, their opinion on this, and I think you want to know as much as you can. So please, at any step in the process, let us know what questions or concerns you might have because, you know, we owe it to you to get you in a position to, to make an informed decision. Whether you choose to do it or not, we've been doing special assessments for a long time. We can keep doing it for a long time. But I think it's based on what council said to us is, we, we want to look for a better alternative, and I think this represents the best alternative that we've seen compared to other municipalities. Even Appleton, as the mayor has talked about, Appleton initiated a wheel tax, and they're already realizing the limitations of the wheel tax, and they've had it in place for what?
Five years, I think.
Five years?
Maybe five. Yeah, maybe five.
Three or five.
But it didn't take long for them to realize the, the imperfections with that. These, I think, address a lot of those, those imperfections.
And I think the rest of your question on those steps is, we would certainly help your staff. We're not attorneys, but we, we can help your legal staff develop the, the parts of that ordinance that you would want to have in place, and then we would provide support with, as Mark was saying, with the education and outreach.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We are now at citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
No, we do not.
All right. Any public comment on agenda items?
No one is registered.
And I did not ask if we had anyone camped virtually. Tony, no? Okay. All right. We'll move on to consent agenda. Do we have a guest here regarding agenda item 21-513 on the Liberty Elm tree that wishes to speak? Would you like to step forward and speak on that item? We typically have that in the beginning before we get to that item. And if you could give your name and address for the clerk?
My name is Robert Haglen. I'm at 365 Bear Creek Road, Green Bay. I came down here to answer any questions on the Liberty Tree or the educational memorial sign, not memorial, educational historical sign that you may have. I am the president of the local chapter of Sons of the American Revolution and the vice president for the state. So I was asked to come down in case you had any questions, I guess.
And yes, if you could just sign in there for the record, that'd be great.
I did try to sign in out there, but wouldn't come up with any.
That's, that's why I wanted to make sure she knew you were here. I thought I saw you plugging away at the computer out there.
I was trying, it wasn't doing anything.
So our kiosk apparently was not operating or cooperating.
And the lady downstairs told me because it's on the agenda, I don't have to sign in, when I did.
Okay. All right. Maybe a couple of sets of instructions just to confuse you.
My wife does that on a normal basis, so this is not.
All right. Did, did anyone want to ask questions? No? Okay. All right. We'll wait then. Thank you, sir.
You want me to stick around for any questions or?
You may, if you wish.
I.
It should be coming up fairly quickly.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to consent agenda. Can I have a motion at a second?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on consent? Councilmember Hanson.
I don't know if we keep a record of it, but we know, I see that we have something for a liquor license, which I approve of, but do we have any record of how many we still have left? I know that people care about that number.
Which item? I'm sorry.
Quite a bit. 21-504. I'm just curious on we have, do we have a count of how many we have on the shelf still? Unless that's not pertaining, my apologies.
How many open licenses?
Yes.
I can confirm it when I get back to the office. I think there's six.
Okay.
Or seven.
Thank you. People are always on that and wondering how many we have, so I figure just, well, we're.
Yeah, the actions tonight don't reduce that number, so if that's.
Yeah, these are special.
Yeah, these are, sometimes there's transfer of names and things like that, but.
Perfect.
I'm looking and I'm not seeing anything that says we're issuing a new one to take our inventory down. Our inventory's still good.
Councilmember Ford, did you?
I'm good.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you. I want to pull number six, 21-500. And then I just have a, I have a question for Finance Director Van Gompul. I know some representatives of a new accounting firm are here, they've driven all the way. We can at least allow Mr. Van Gompul to, to tell us about 21-502 and what he's asking us to do. And before he does, I'm appreciative that, that the city went out for an RFP here on, on this process. I know previously, in previous councils, a few, few members, including myself, had pushed Public Works to do that a little bit more often, just to make sure that we're competitive in the marketplace, that we're getting the best bang for the, the taxpayer's buck. And I just wanted to say I appreciate that you guys did go through that process and, and you're here with a new request this evening, so, for a new, a new accounting firm for the city.
Yes, thank you. I did a memo that kind of covered the change in our accounting firm. I didn't have it in the memo, but I think the last time the city went out for proposals was back in 2007, so it's been over, you know, 14, 15 years ago. We took bids. We had five bids. We had a staff team evaluate those bids and looked at the cost, and we're recommending the city council consider Kerber Rose, who are our new accounting firm, auditing services. And we do have two representatives here from the firm, if they want to make a quick introduction, that'd be probably appropriate, if that's okay, Mayor?
Yes, please. Step.
Okay.
Right up here, to your left.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Greg Patel. I'm a partner at Kerber Rose specializing in governmental auditing. And Dave Minch is a senior manager on our governmental audit team. So at Kerber Rose, we really build your audit experience on high-level access to the most skilled and experienced audit team members. And what that means is Dave or I will be in the field during the audit each, each and every day. We believe that ensures a smooth audit process as well as enhances the quality of the dialogue between your finance team and, and the audit team. And then the second part of that is helping tell the city's story through your financial reporting. And so a timely issued financial report as well as a highly qualified financial report. And I know Russ is looking forward to achieving the GFOA certificate program. We have a partner on board, Christina Dahmer, that started at the GFOA, and she graded these certificate award financial statements for the better part of 10 years. So we have that expertise in obtaining that certificate for the city. So we really are excited at the prospect of partnering with you for the audit.
And I guess Mr. Patel did mention it, but he has some experience in working with the city. If you go back prior to the acquisition, Shanken Associates was the auditing firm that did the city's audit, and Mr. Patel was part of that team. And then when they were combined with Clifton Larson Allen, he moved over to Kerber Rose. So it's going to be, I think, a smooth transition, and Greg's very familiar with, with the city of Oshkosh and, and our accounting system.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And then, did you? And then did you say you want to pull 500?
Please, yeah.
Yep, okay. All right, so we're going to vote on consent agenda minus 21-500 and 21-502?
No, just 500 was pulled, just had a comment on 502.
Okay, all right. 500?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Please call the roll on consent agenda minus 21-500.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Ugrauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Yes, Councilor, Deputy Mayor.
I'm moved for approval for 21-500.
Second.
Discussion?
Yep, if you don't mind. I'll press the button for you. If City Finance Director Van Gompo wouldn't mind coming up, this one also may fall under the parks a little bit, but the reason I asked for this to be pulled, this is a little bit out of the norm. It's not normally something that's on consent. This is a budget adjustment. This is using general fund balance to take care of a project that we hadn't previously talked about. So I just, I feel it's worth a few minutes of our time discussing why we're using some general fund when we didn't go through the normal processes. We're here at the end of the year. I guess one of the questions, if you wouldn't mind explaining why we're doing it this way, but if you wouldn't mind answering where we're at in this part of the year, why this maybe wouldn't have been included in the 2022 operational budget and using those funds the same way, but just given timing, I'm just wondering if you wouldn't mind explaining.
Sure. I might ask Bill to come forward as well from the forestry side of things, but forestry came to me. The issue is dealing with Emerald Ashmore trees in the right-of-way area. And quite honestly, as I understand it, the demand and the need to remove the trees from a safety perspective is something that the city should consider. I worked with the Parks Department and suggested that we use fund balance because it wasn't part of the 2021 budget. So we're asking you to use some of that fund balance. We'll have a more detailed discussion of fund balance in your budget book. I don't remember the exact page number, but there's a fund balance analysis in there. We are over the maximum amount of fund balance that's set up by our policy that the Long Range Finance Committee looked at and put into play. And this, I think, would be an appropriate use of fund balance because we weren't planning on doing this when the year started, but it's something that we need to address. And since I kind of viewed it as a one-time expenditure, I thought we could look and use fund balance and make that expenditure. It's quite possible based on the way the disease is moving through our community that we might have to do something more permanently, but this will at least get us started and look at it more of a pilot program. And I would turn over to Bill for anything as far as the operational side.
Yes, the Emerald Ashmore mortality was observed to be at very high levels this past winter, so this wasn't something that we were really, you know, budgeting for immediately. Currently, our crew has been working on removing trees that are affected over the last couple of years. This past winter, we just had close to 1,000 trees show evidence of infestation. And the concern is that the longer they stand in the dead and decaying situation, that they do create a liability for the city. So we approached the Finance Department to see if we could try to find some funds to more rapidly mitigate that situation. Our crew will continue to work on removing trees, but it's, at this point, well above our capacity to accomplish it in a timely manner.
I appreciate the information, gentlemen. Just thought it was appropriate that we talk about this, just because it is out of the normal for the process. And so I appreciate you guys coming up and giving us, us and those at home, a little bit more detail. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One moment, I just have a follow-up question. And last night, Parks Advisory Board, we talked about the last kind of tree, urban street trees and our tree kind of inventory analysis was done back in 2012, 2013 with the 700 or so lost. This only covers removal and not replacement, correct?
That's correct.
So this will leave quite a hole in that inventory for us to come back and replace, correct?
Yes, of course. Ash represents about 9% of our inventory currently. We've been working to make that number smaller over a number of years anyway by increasing species diversity, planting other trees so that we don't have, you know, quite such a high level of ash. So you're correct, we will need to restock, and that's something that will be ongoing to for a number of years. But that is not part of this proposal at this point.
Right, okay.
It's a, thank you for bringing it up because that's obviously going to be something. I'm happy to report that through League Mutual Insurance, of which I'm a board member, the board approved a program to provide parks grants to communities. And it's sort of an automatic, it's not an application. The city's going to be receiving $20,000, and our goal is to use it to specifically replant trees in the right-of-way. So we'll see that coming forward relatively soon. I think we're going to be getting the check. The check's in the mail, so to speak, so I would think that for early 2022, we'll be talking about that. And I think we're going to need, $20,000 is not going to replace the number of trees that Mr. Stern has pointed out. We've got a lot of work to do to restore our urban forest, Bill? Is that a good way to put it?
Yeah, we'd like to replace them as we take them out. So, you know, that way we keep a, you know, continual momentum going with the replanting process.
So on that league insurance, that was a grant from the insurance company, not an insurance coverage for the loss. We don't, our trees aren't insured, right?
No, that's a good question, but sorry.
If anybody's got that product out there, we might want to hear it, right?
Yeah.
Tree insurance, but, all right, okay, thanks. Any other questions on 21-500? All right, please take the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Ugrauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we will move on to new ordinance 21-505. There will be no action this evening. That's for canceling December 28, 2021 council meeting. And we will proceed to pending ordinances, 21-506, amend parking regulations on designated streets and alleys.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Ugrauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
And 21-507, amend parking regulations on South Main Street. If I recall, that was restricting on, was it one side of the street? Let's see here, well, I suppose we can look at that. No parking both sides from Fox River to Fond du Lac Road. Okay, both sides, all right.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Ugrauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
21-508, all right, this is going to be tricky, so I'm going to read it slow. Restrict left turns from northbound Jackson Street to westbound Nevada Avenue and remove the left turn restriction from Jackson Street to New York Avenue from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Ford?
I just want to say really quickly that it's, Jackson's awesome right now. I think the traffic flow is better. I think that this is a logical next step, given the improvements. Happy to support this.
All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Ugrauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance 21-509, designate bicycle lanes on West 9th Avenue, west of Oakwood Road.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? A lot of folks are happy to see additional bicycle lanes. Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Ugrauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance 21-510, amend Chapter 9, emergency and disaster planning and response.
So moved.
Second.
City manager or city attorney, would you like to just kind of give a brief summary of what we changed in there?
It's basically cleanup, the state statute number changed, so we had to do that. And then there were a couple other just minor language tweaks in the ordinance.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll on 510, 21-510.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Ugrauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
And our last pending ordinance, 21-511, amend ordinance for lead service line replacement to include galvanized lines downstream from lead water service lines.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Robby, would you like to come up and talk about this again? I know we had a first reading, but just to get folks accustomed to what this means.
Yeah, what this is doing is bringing our local ordinance in conformance with the updates to the lead and copper rule that are going to be going into effect here in about two months. And what the EPA and the DNR are implementing with the lead and copper rule is that any service lateral that is made of galvanized iron that is downstream of lead or was downstream of lead is to be replaced as a part of the lead and copper rule because of the galvanized material's propensity to absorb lead particles if they've dislodged from the lead service. So the regulating agencies consider them to be lead based on the updates to the rule, so it's bringing our ordinance into match.
And this is typically more on the private side, correct?
Yes, this is on the private side and just the service lateral portion of it, not interior plumbing.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Ugrauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
And we're at new resolutions, 21-512, approve tax increment district number 41, project plan, designate tax increment district number 41 boundaries, create TID number 41, Smith School redevelopment, Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on TID 41. Any questions for folks? All right, I believe there is an event coming up regarding that on Friday.
Friday.
Yes? All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Ugrauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 21-513, approve donor recognition sign for donated Liberty Elm tree at George Washington Triangle. Advisory Parks Board recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on 21-513. You should have in your packets an updated resolution on this. And let's see here. So this is a deviation from what would typically be a memorial tree planting.
That's why it's before the council.
And that's why we have it here. It went to parks. There was some discussion about whether or not the neighborhood that's kind of adopted that square and care of that, and who the appropriate, or what the appropriate format for this donated sign, which came as is in advance before it kind of went through the process. So this is a situation similar to what Plan Commission experiences at times where the work gets done before the plan gets approved. So this was another way in which to look at that. Do other council members have questions for Mr. Hogland? Mr. Hogland, could you come forward? I think you mentioned earlier, you live in Green Bay and you're a part of the Sons of the American Revolution, and that organization decided to request this. What started that process to make this request?
This is part of the America 250. Obviously, we're coming up on that celebration soon, but this started back in 2014, and it's going to continue through the 250th anniversary. So this is their part or our part of getting that going. And the Liberty Tree, we all know, was Boston, and that was, while Boston was under siege, they cut it down, and that became Liberty Hall. So it was an important place in Boston for them to gather and where they planned out, where the Patriots planned out everything that was going in there or going on while they were at odds with the British. So this is continuing, it's going nationwide. That particular sign that you see, we modified as to whatever it be, whatever they want on there. We just did one in Oshkosh and Oneida for the tribe, dedicated to one of the four patriots buried within what we consider my chapter, which is quite large. It's, you know, in Illinois now, Iowa, soon to be in Connecticut.
And the Sons of the American Revolution, if I'm not mistaken, they, you can only join that by proving direct lineage and being male, is that correct?
That's correct. The daughters are on the female side.
Mr. Hogland, not everybody's overly familiar with the Liberty Tree, right?
That's correct.
Are there some violent histories associated with that location? Ephesies and nooses, hangings, beheadings, burning of houses?
They did burn an effigy of the, on the tree of a tax collector. It was a, the king would appoint tax collectors for the Stamp Act, whatever else. And the people in Boston didn't like it. So they did burn an effigy there. Were people beheaded there? No. This was all part of the buildup to the revolution, where they planned a Boston Tea Party and the different activities that they did. Is it violent? Not everything was violent there. I guess if you want to consider the burning of a effigy to warn a tax collector, don't do this, I guess you would consider that violent, but it was a way to get them to stop collecting the taxes that the townspeople didn't agree on, or the country as a whole. Because what it was, when they started fighting the tax collection in Boston, all of the 13 colonies looked at this and said, if this is going on in Boston, it's going to spread throughout the colonies. So they all joined in on it and said, believe it or not, when something happened in Boston, within four days, it was all ready to South Carolina and Georgia, spread by Curry and Saul. Is everything that happened there violent? No. When Boston was under siege, was it violent? Well, yes, you had the Battle of Bunker Hill, you had Concord and Lexington, but the siege of Boston, Washington had it surrounded, and very little happened there. The British decided that they couldn't win this, so they just packed up and left. But other than that, the tree was just a gathering place, and it's, that area where it was at is still called Liberty Hall or Liberty Square. Tree was cut down during the siege because they ran out of stuff to burn in Boston, so they burned the tree. so they burned the tree. I think they got 26 cords, 26 cords of wood out of it.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I was reading the minutes from the Parks Board that approved, recommended we approve this. And it said that you, correct me if I'm wrong, you chose the location here in Oshkosh because of the uniqueness of the George Washington statue?
That is correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
I think they're putting one in it, capital or negotiations on that. My particular chapter, which is the Hendrik Appima chapter, we're putting it all at the grave sites of the four patriots that are buried within our chapter bounds. And that includes Oshkosh. All of ours happen to be Native Americans. So I'm working with the tribes on that, and I only have one left to do. But we did choose Oshkosh with the George Washington statue because it's pretty pertinent. That's where George Washington first took command, was at Boston, where the Liberty Tree was located.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoagland, did you also reach out to the Parks Department staff for the appropriate placement and scale for the memorial tree? And that's why we're here tonight, right? Because that, that didn't happen? And the sign was prepared? And it was kind of assumed that this would just go in, in, in that format? And that's why we're now looking at a different policy for this, correct?
Yes, I, I reached out to the Parks Department. I think you and I even talked on this. And when apparently the Neighborhood Association said they wanted that granite memorial, like, this is not memorial, it's historical and educational. And you couldn't put the information on that small piece of granite that would explain what the Liberty Tree is or why it would, why it would have it there. And I brought the sign down, gave it to the Parks Department, and it's just progressed from there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anyone else? So it's also my understanding that the Neighborhood Association adjacent there had expressed their wishes that this not be placed in this format. So I just share that with council. If anybody has any other discussion? We can call the roll.
Bojeholsky?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muberower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
No.
Period 51.
All right, we are at 21-513. I'm sorry, it's incorrect. We are at council discussion and direction to city manager and future agenda items. Deputy Mayor Muberower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things, one, I guess it'd be appropriate for council to either give some direction or request that the city manager put on a future agenda a follow-up to our presentation this evening for the special assessment, so that we can give them some guidance on if we'd like them to move forward with anything at all, or, or nothing. So that would be appropriate. And then I made mention to the city manager in passing recently, we are still under a state of emergency in the city of Oshkosh. We have been since March of 2020 due to COVID. I think it'd be appropriate for the city manager's office to give us an update as to why we're still in one and when we can anticipate coming out of one, or what would the, what trigger might have to happen for us to, to end our state of emergency. There's some powers that come along with that. And I think it'd just be appropriate that we're, you know, 18 months into one, and that we get a little update in, in terms of when he thinks we might come out of one. So those would be my two requests for, for future agenda discussions or, or action items.
Are you suggesting a workshop for street assessment?
No, I'm not suggesting a workshop, just that we put it on the agenda for council to even just discuss, so we can provide any guidance whatsoever.
Yeah, I would assume that, you know, if we, if there's a contract that the council needs to approve, we would bring that contract. If it's not approval, it's just informing, we'll inform you. But getting the process started, and I think the whole public education thing. So staff will talk about that now that the presentation's done. So we'll be doing that, and I anticipate the next meeting.
Excellent.
Any other future meetings? Future workshops, the third and fourth budget workshops? Oh, Councilmember Ford.
Oh, I was just going to answer the question that, yeah, I think we should move forward with this current situation. It's not tenable.
Does anyone have any concerns, timeframes? Any other interesting information? All right. So third and fourth budget workshops, 18th and 19th, here at City Hall.
You have your annual reading assignment in front of you? Enjoy reading this weekend. Sorry to ruin your weekend.
The baby is birthed here.
I'll have to grab Mr. Millers to get to him, but...
And city manager roll, those are all televised, right? For the public to watch?
Yes, they are. We're going to be right here in room 404. And eight to five. If somebody's got some insomnia they need to cure, I'm sure we'll be able to cure that for them. And we'll have, you know, a light breakfast and lunch each day, so you can come and just keep regenerating yourself. And, and we've got to schedule it department, so you'll see those over the two days. So we really appreciate the time that you're giving, of your personal time to be with us to, to discuss the budget.
Thank you.
All right, we're at report of council liaison for boards and commissions. We did have the Parks Advisory Board meet last night. There is another donated memorial coming to council that the Parks Advisory Board did approve. Also, there was an impact report Ann Schaefer gave on the Parks Department for 2020. Some great highlights in that impact report. And there was a review of the tree analysis that the DNR had grant funded back in 2012, which actually showed some great information. It is out there on the Parks website. It quantifies, you know, things like how many dollars each tree generates in savings, in carbon sink, in a variety of infographic style. So easy to digest. Very interested in seeing whether or not we can move forward on doing an update to that, to show where we're at. Obviously, we heard tonight that we've, we're losing those 700-plus, and there have been a few storms since then. We've done some planting. It'd be interesting to see where our inventory is. That's all I have for Parks. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Long Range Finance happened to meet this last week. This is actually just a shameful plug. We were not able to actually conduct business because we didn't, we lacked a quorum. So just as a reminder for those out there that may be listening, at least Long Range Finance, I know there's several other openings that the mayor appoints or, and council consents. But Long Range Finance is, is missing one and a couple alternates. So if you're interested in the city's finances or long-range planning and things of that sorts, please put in an application, because we could use some citizen assistance on that board.
Thank you for that reminder. We have several open spots. Some folks, a lot of folks are moving around with jobs and life changes here in the last year. And certainly, we welcome all the new folks coming in. But there are a number of vacancies that you can see on the city website under government, boards and commissions. Thanks, Ben, reminder. And we're at city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your packet, there's a memo regarding the contracting with Tyler Technologies for the annual maintenance of our commercial assessment system. That's a budgeted item. Outstanding issues, in your Friday packet, I gave you a third quarter report on how I'm progressing with the goals that council gave. I think, you know, probably the biggest one that you've seen in terms of the homelessness issue is that the Tiny Homes Project. I had an opportunity to meet with that group, I believe, the week before last. They are in the process of finalizing what will ultimately be a submittal to the city for consideration. The location of that is on Packer Avenue between Jackson and Main. So you can just kind of get an idea about where it is. There's a Verve Credit Union office. It's immediately west of there, to give you a good point of reference. But that group is, is proceeding. I've expressed concerns about the, the ability of the, the group to sustain itself in the long term. So I've made that very clear to them, and we'll be having, we're going to continue discussions with them on that. But that was, it was kind of in the, in the background, but now they've come forth, and Ms. Nyforth and I had a very good meeting with them. What, about a dozen people, would you say, Kelly? Yeah, so we had about a dozen people covering the wide range of financing, the operations. They still have a little work to do in that, you know, I say within the next month, and who knows? It might take a little longer, depending on some of their things. But I thought that that was something that, I know there's been some buzz in social media and stuff. Figured you'd happy to answer any questions about what I know, but I don't know all the details just yet. The other one I would point out is that the facility assessment status, the ADA assessment is complete. I have a meeting scheduled with the contractor that did that on the 28th of this month. So we'll be able to be, the next steps will definitely be forthcoming after that meeting. So more to come on that. Certainly happy to answer any other questions you might have regarding any of the other items. Ms. Nyforth and I are meeting with Ms. Albright from CVB regarding the, the tourism assessment, what kind of next steps we're going to be looking at there. You, you heard the bid, they made their, their pitch and everything. And that was one of the ARPA requests. And just to, just to give you a price tag, they were looking at $5 to $8 million. So just brace yourselves. But they, they don't get if they don't ask. But we'll be talking about some ideas on how that can move forward, perhaps without ARPA. But we're certainly going to be there talking to them.
That would come to council for direction, though, right?
Oh, absolutely. We don't even know where this concept would be located. So we got a lot of work to do before that one goes. I don't have a location like Tiny Homes to report to you. So it'll, it, but the discussion, obviously, the bid thinks that that's a, they were very excited to see that recommendation. So I suspect you're going to hear it from bid members as you make your way around, as you go to the holiday parade, the Halloween event. You're going to hear this. I think I hear it weekly from Shonda Carmel Crispoe. She's not the first one, and she won't be the last. So you'll be hearing it yourselves.
I'm, I do say we're missing on here. I don't know if it dropped off, or the follow-up on the housing study.
I don't believe that was in there, but since I have Ms. Nyforth here, and she was in the hot seat tonight, this, you've just given her justification to be here, so thank you.
Almost made it through. The housing study, I think probably about a month ago, I mentioned that we were in the final review stages. So we should have another draft coming forward, and I think next week. So we're going to be working with our stakeholder group and community partners to go through it, make sure it looks right. And hopefully, we'll be having it come forward for everyone to see and view in, probably in the next month or so. So it seems to be slowing down a little bit. Are we close or no? We, we took a look at it, and there was, for one, I, we had asked if we could include the census data that just came out. Of course, it came out in September. So I think we made a decision, we'd rather delay it a month to get that updated data. Oh, so you are, okay, okay. So that was a big part of it, why we did that. Okay, thank you.
I just want to just remind everybody, we have a tour of the water filtration plant tomorrow evening. We had said we were going to get, reach out to the neighbors. We've notified the neighbors, as well as other people who have given me their opinions on this. It'll start at the waters, the waters will be hosting the event. I told them the bar had to be closed, so sorry about that. They'll be there at 5:30, and we're anticipating we'll head over to the water treatment plant around 6:30. So if you're only interested in the tour, now that I've told you the bar's closed, just come on over around 6:30.